Is Aja coming?
I've got it.
He's here.
Do what?
He's got to be.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I didn't know. I usually, he comes breezing in.
Yeah, you were just here a minute ago. I just saw. He was right behind you, wasn't he? God, he was. Oh, here it comes.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, please be seated. This meeting will come to order. Today is January twenty-second at six P M. Liz, please call the roll.
Councilmember Archie?
Here.
Councilmember Bax?
Here.
Councilmember Miles?
Here.
Councilmember Zaja?
Here.
Council Chairperson Perry?
Here.
Today, the prayer and pledge will be led by Tracy Bax.
Oh God, the Father of us all, we humbly beseech thee in thy wisdom and knowledge to guide and direct the deliberations of this council along the path of truth, justice, and righteousness, so that what it decides for the welfare of our citizens may also redound to thy greater honor and glory. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you all for braving the cold temperatures this evening. And joining us here are co-speak, City Council Chambers. We have no presentations this evening, so we'll move right into speakers on the agenda items. Here, do we have speakers on agenda items?
Yes, Council Chairperson, we do. Our first speaker is Janine Gallow. She has listed Agenda Items one through ten.
Thank you. I'm speaking on the Agenda Items, one through, I think, ten, only because I don't understand the Agenda Items. I've been coming here over a year now, and I think I've only spoken maybe once or twice about an Agenda Item. But I know you can't answer me, but in case when you get to speak, if you're allowed to speak, in your, in your time period to speak. My question is, if you're voting on all these agendas, and you're supposed to vote for them to make sure it's in the best interest of the community of Niagara Falls, when you vote on them and you vote something down, why even vote if it doesn't matter? If your vote is four-one, three-two, if it doesn't matter at the end of the day if it goes back to where, to the top, and he, he doesn't, says he doesn't care what you vote? So what's the process? Why do we, why don't you just take your salaries, go home with your families, and give the money to the community? Because you're not helping the community if you're voting for something and it doesn't matter what your vote is. I know you're looking at me all in awe, you don't care, but I care. I, you've got fifty-six million dollars, and twenty million of it was on the agenda the last meeting of the four years you had to spend it. And I drove around Niagara Falls, and it was funny, because I, I got, I, I went a different way, and I saw a sign that says, "Shopping, shopping, shopping at Main Street, this way," that turn, and I'm like, "What's shopping?" They're all abandoned buildings until, like, at the city hall, and they're even abandoned across from here, in the dark. Shopping, there's actually a sign that says, tells me to turn to go shopping. Where? Is that on the Agenda? I don't think so. So you have fifty-six million dollars, and you had, he, he, everybody's in plus. He's got three S's guaranteed, no matter how much money goes through here. You have. You have, um, all this money went through, all these plans are on a piece of paper. I know three times, I looked up three times, there's been a dog shelter. Money spent at a dog shelter. It's kind of weird, it's the same company getting paid again to draw a picture that, and once again, you don't even have a picture of, but it was on the Agenda. You passed it on the Agenda without seeing a picture. So you, you gave thirteen thousand to, for them to say, "Oh, you can put it here." You gave them two-hundred-and-eighty thousand to draw a picture. You didn't get either of those, and now you passed four-point, four million dollars to build something you don't know a picture of. You have a picture shown all over on the media. There's gasoline tanks there. Do you know you have to do a Phase One, Phase Two if you have gasoline on the property? You have to dig the ground. Like, y- you guys don't care, because it doesn't matter if the project goes through or not, it just doesn't matter. The money's spent, the money's gone. Go look, I, I hear a park on the Agenda. It was supposed to be on the Agenda, never made the Agenda. You, but, but...
Getting off the subject.
It's the Agenda. It's all about the Agenda.
Particular Agenda Items, Mr. Chairperson, the speaker has beared off the specific Agenda...
You named a specific Agenda Item as number ten. If you want to speak to general items, you have to speak to the general item.
Yeah, general.
Go to the community, not for this portion.
Well, I was just, I'm talking about the agendas, that's all. I'm all done. Do I need to get this notarized, or am I okay to leave?
I'm sure you're not leaving, but I, I would notarize it for you if it was necessary. It's not.
Our next speaker is Tanya Barone. Um, Tanya, why don't you come to the mic, would you like us to know the Agenda Items?
I'm going to speak on Agenda Item Number One. To approve the waiver of forgiveness of unpaid city property taxes owing on eight city-owned properties before the same are transferred to Norlick and authorized the mayor to execute any deeds or documents necessary to effectuate the transfer of said properties to Norlick. So, I looked up what Norlick is, because I wasn't familiar, although I've seen some agents' names, um, in the area selling for Norlick. Um, what I'm a little confused on is that if these properties are purchased in auction, it's my understanding that anyone purchasing auctioned properties have to pay all the back taxes as a part of the agreement, and I don't know why Norlick wouldn't have to pay. So I'm a little confused on that. Um, it seems as if there are county agency. I'm wondering that who is fixing up the properties? Is it the county? Um, or do they determine and hire, um, people to renovate the properties, and then where does that money go back into the proceeds that they make on those properties? Does it go into the county? And I'm wondering how these agents hook up with Norlick to sell Norlick properties. Just seems kind of odd, and I think that if we approve Norlick to continually sign up and purchase properties at auction, and then turn around and renege and say, "Hmm, we don't want to pay the taxes now, can we be forgiven?" Um, I know that I've been here before where another company just did this as well, and the mayor waived the back taxes for another company. I think that we need to consider doing this for citizens and residents that are also interested, because we have less money than these big companies and the county. So let's make it fair for everyone, because you can't cherry pick. Unless I'm missing something, it seems like cherry picking. Cherry picking of agents, cherry picking of who's the contractors, and cherry picking of who gets the tax breaks. I have said in my piece.
Tim and the other speakers?
Okay, thank you. Do we have any administrative updates?
Not this evening, thank you.
Okay, on to community happenings. I like to say, last Friday, as this agenda was put out, a member of our staff was undergoing a procedure which took a traumatic turn. I announced this evening with a heavy heart that Nadine Spiccone Wesson passed away last Friday evening while undergoing what should have been a routine procedure. Her wake is going to be at Calucci's Funeral Home on Military Road tomorrow, from ten A M. to noon, if anybody's interested in attending. Also, if anyone's interested in the Goodyear and D E C, you might have been reading in the newspapers lately, there's going to be an online webinar, which you can ask questions and get some answers to. It will be at W W W D E C dot New York dot gov, get slash involved slash public participation. If you want to see me after the meeting, I'll be glad to give you contact details or anything to announce. So you're looking at your phone.
No, usually sometimes I keep something in there, but I think that's, um, I, I, I think it would be fitting if we could, um, it give, you know, a moment of silence for her being that she was, you know, active, she was here, and, you know, she was a part of, she's a part of our city, and just, you know, and prayers to her and to, to her family in their time of loss.
Acknowledged. Okay, moving on. Anybody else have any announcements? Okay, um, moving on, we're now at section four of the Agenda. Are there any motions to amend the Agenda by roll call vote? If not, do we have a motion to adopt the Agenda as proposed? Motion. Okay, right, okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, anyone opposed? Okay, let's pre-call the roll.
Councilmember Archie?
Yes.
Councilmember Bax?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Vitya?
Yes.
Council Chairperson Perry?
Yes.
Five A's.
Five A's, the A's have it. Motion to carry. And then we're on to section five, review of the minutes for the special meeting for the Budget Work Session on November twenty-first. Does anybody have any corrections to those minutes? If not, then let them stand, approved as distributed. Let's see, there's nothing from the clerk's office. Has anything changed? Okay. Uh, on to the Agenda Items. Legislative Item Number One. May I have a motion, please?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. I move the council vote to approve the waiver and forgiveness of unpaid city property taxes owing on eight city-owned properties before the same are transferred to Norlick and authorize the mayor to execute any deeds and other documents necessary to effectuate the transfer of the said properties to Norlick as more fully outlined in the mayor's recommendation memo dated January fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
May I have a second, please? Yeah, we'll not restate the motion unless there's a request to do so. Um, is there any information requests?
Does Norlick stand to turn a profit from these properties that they purchased?
Norlick is a not-for-profit corporation, so technically, it does not post profits. It's a not-for-profit corporation.
Okay, and so, when the initial twelve properties were agreed upon by a city, by the City Council, and by a city back in twenty twenty-two, I believe it was, right?
Between two dates, those twelve were assembled through action by this council in September twenty twenty-two, and then in February of twenty twenty-four. That's how we got to the total of twelve.
Okay, um, were the unpaid taxes not mentioned to them or addressed at that time?
I can't speak to September twenty twenty-two as to February twenty twenty-four, although I just assume corporation council duties, I am not aware what discussions may have occurred, whether Norlick was aware of them or not. They tell us that they were not aware. When, when the process started just not too many months ago to transfer the properties, Norlick realized that there were a host of unpaid taxes, city, school, and county. And that's when they approached us and said, "We can't go forward with this deal if we're going to be assuming these tax burdens that we didn't expect to have." So they asked, they asked that those city taxes, the unpaid city taxes, be forgiven, and if so, Norlick states that they will proceed with, with the transfer, they will take the properties.
Okay. Is any opposition?
I kind of oppose, um, do, no, I don't, I don't kind of, I do, um, because I just know it's a lot of peop, it's, it's, it's a lot of residents that have, have the ability to purchase city-owned property. And I don't see us giving that level of, uh, you know, subsidies or, uh, you know, tax cuts to our residents. I mean, the way, a- and, and they have the ability to, and whether it's to rehab it, whether it's to occupy it as a family own, fa- fa- family occupancy, rental, or even resale, um, I'd rather, if there is a profit to be turned, I'd rather it go into the hands of people who are already vested, invested into the city, people who live here. And I just, I just don't see that. I don't see that, a- and I feel like that should have probably been exhausted, that idea, or, or that opportunity should have been exhausted before we turn it over into another business, give it to another, or, or another entity such as, you know, Norlick, or, um, you know, the urban renewal, a- and all of these other different agencies to do something with, where we can have people, you know, be willing to stay, stay here, because they know they can buy a home. There's a lot of people who are, who, since I've been elected, and since we've been elected, who've asked, "Hey, what about, how, where are the city properties? I would love to buy or purchase properties here, right in the city." And if that was how, if that was the standard that we set for our city, I believe that more people would be more interested in coming back here and possibly purchasing, because we already get taxed to death in the state of New York, we know that. So, um, I think that right there, a- 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 and, 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 and let's see about us being willing to forgive back taxes for those who choose to buy city property from, a- as a resident, because I keep seeing it from these, th- th- these different entities, but not for the residents, and I feel like they're the ones that's getting left behind. So that's my objection to it.
Council, did I even say this is a not-for-profit organization?
It is, and it was, the properties, eight properties that are issued this evening were foreclosed upon in two thousand and ten, so several, several years ago, and nobody expressed interest in purchasing them before Norlick.
Okay.
So they've been sitting idle, uh, since the nicer administration.
And if somebody purchased a property that had back taxes and they asked for a waiver, would they be considered?
As an individual?
Yeah.
I'm not aware of the precedent for an individual requesting a waiver. I am only familiar with not-for-profit entities requesting waiver of taxes, back taxes. There may, i- if there's, if there's an exception to that rule, it's not coming to mind right now. Theoretically, could any taxpayer approach the council? You know, if I were just a citizen and not an employee, could I, could I ask the council, could I lobby the council to waive my back taxes? Anything's possible, and I imagine that the council would, would look at each situation separately, but I, you know. The difference here is, if someone's going to buy it as an individual, as a for-profit, either as a for-profit individual, or because I have a for-profit help... or because I have a for-profit LLC and the plan is to develop it and flip it or develop and rent it, it is a profit-making business. Norlich, on the other hand, what they do is they take grant money. They obtain contractors to rehab these properties, and Norlich doesn't hang on to them. They then find buyers, oftentimes first-time homeowners, and make deals with those, those first-time homeowners to become purchasers. And then when those, when those property owners take title from Norlich, then the property returns to the tax rolls. And that's how you get taxes off of property. You have to have occupants.
I understand. I've got a question for you. Where would those, where would the actual, so in the event, so they will sell it. So in the event that they do sell it, where does those profits go to? Does that go back to the city?
So I would, I would recommend that anyone with questions about Norlich, look up Norlich on, on the web. There's a lot of information about how they were founded, what their mission is. They're, they're in the same type of business as Habitat for Humanity and other similar organizations. Habitat does the same thing, and I'm sure that this council has granted tax breaks to.
You're being a distraction back there. Could you please be seated or leave, okay? Go ahead, Counsel, I'm sorry.
But in any event, whether it's, whether it's Habitat for Humanity or Norlich, they, they advertise that the properties are available. And Norlich has a website where they, they do, once they have rehabbed houses, they in a sense market them and say, if you're interested in, you know, moving to North Tonawanda, there's this house on such and such a street. If you're interested in moving into Niagara Falls, there's a recently rehabbed house on such and such street. And from that point, prospective future owners approach Norlich. They probably have to fill out an application, you know, to express why they believe that they're, they're going to be the best owner. And there may be actually, actually be competition between several applicants, and then Norlich makes the decision. That's how it works. But definitely check out the Norlich website for more details. And they don't use, they do not use real estate agents. So someone asked, you know, who are the agents? How do you get to be an agent? There are no, there are no real estate agents involved in this transaction to this date.
Okay. Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Archie?
Just quick before I go, I myself talked to Matt Chavez at Norlich. And usually what will occur is any monies from the first-time home buyer goes back into, into Norlich to, to buy more properties. Same thing as the land bank in Buffalo, as they use to try to revitalize the Fruit Belt neighborhood. But to the comments that were made, I absolutely agree that I wish that there were more opportunity or we need to figure out how there is more opportunity for individuals here that would like to purchase, rehabilitate a home, whether it's a first-time buy and/or for, you know, rental income, the same way we do Airbnbs. And I don't think anybody from council would not want to waive taxes or, or any of those things to help enhance someone's lifestyle and, and well-being. But with that, I vote yes.
Councilmember Banks?
Yes, so I do think it's good to have a diverse, you know, a diverse set of programs to rehab our homes and get them back into the market space and back into the hands of residents here in Niagara Falls. And we started this program with Norlack and committed to the land bank while I was on the council and even previous to that. So I do vote yes to continue with the project.
Councilmember Miles?
So it's, it's a tough thing because I do, I, I, I want to see houses back on the tax roll. So however, I also want to see a little bit more transparency as it pertains to homes that are available. And I've asked multiple times, I've sent emails asking for, you know, even properties that are available within the city, that are city-owned. And I got like a very small list, probably about that big, of homes, and it was just like random. But what happens is, and I guess this is the part that kind of baffles me because we come here and I continuously see a new list of new homes, 10 homes at a time that we're going to give to one entity for $5,000 apiece, or so many different new pieces of property that city-owned, available. But when it comes down to local residents being able to, because we're already, the local residents are already paying astronomical rent. Their rent, the rent now costs more than it does to actually own a home in the city of Niagara Falls. So I would think that the whole idea of allowing someone to have a piece of the pie and to be able to own in the city and, and, and not be burdened with the whole back tax, if that's the case, and that, that be even an idea, I think that would be something that would make more sense. So personally, I'm for, you know, Norlich purchasing the property. I'm just not for waiving these taxes. I believe that that should have been something that when they came to the table the first time, should have been brought. And I don't see that that was the case. They said it wasn't brought to their attention. I don't know who dropped the ball on that space because someone was, I would think, would have told them that there are back taxes to this property if you want to own it. So my vote is no.
Councilmember Zajac?
I've heard a couple of times tonight, getting properties back on the tax roll is, you know, the end goal and something that obviously we as council would hope is sooner rather than later, as we heard some of these properties have been, you know, sitting around since 2010. To that point, I do agree with my two colleagues that I, I think as long as there is merit and structure to it, I think a program similar to this for either first-time homeowners or even as Councilmember Archie said, rental properties or anything like that, as long as there was a proper structure put in place and a program brought to the council, I definitely think that could be something that we would take a look at and possibly pass on to the residents. But for this particular item, my vote is yes.
And council chairperson?
Yes.
Four yeas, one non.
Motion's carried. Agenda item number two, may I have a motion, please?
Yes, for number two, I move the council vote to approve the reorganization of the, in the Department of Public Works and Parks as more fully outlined in the mayor's recommendation memo dated January 15th, 2025.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any information requests? Okay, any opposition? Liz, please call the roll.
Councilmember Archie?
Yes.
Councilmember Banks?
Yes.
Councilmember Vios?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajac? Councilchairperson Perry?
Yes.
Five yeas.
Five yeas, the ayes have it. Motion carried. Item number three, may I have a motion, please?
Yes, for number three, I move the council vote to approve a property damage settlement payment of $8,716.50 that will fully resolve the pending claim of Simlon Islam as more fully outlined in the Acting Corporation Council's recommendation memo dated January 15th, 2025.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Any information requests? Any opposition? Liz, please call the roll.
Councilmember Archie?
Yes.
Councilmember Banks?
Yes.
Councilmember Vios?
I'm, I, I, that's, that's one of the reasons why I always talk about trees and things like that because of the simple fact that we have nearly a $9,000 payout that we got to pay out due to a bad tree that is unhealthy falling on someone's property. So I believe it is important to address those issues. So I vote yes as well.
Councilmember Zajac?
Yes.
Councilchairperson Perry?
Yes.
Five yeas.
Yeas have it. Motion's adopted. Item number three, may I have a motion, please? I'm sorry. Motion, we're moving fast. Motion number four, may I have a motion, please?
I move the council vote to approve the resolution relative to the city of Niagara Falls, city council authorizing legal action to recover title to the 10th Street Playground property.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay. Any motion, any information requests? Any opposition?
I have an opposition. So this, of course, this has been news lately. I think the issue that I have is this, two years later, after eminent domain court cases, lawyer fees, two years later, we magically come up with this idea that we own half of the land that we actually fighting for and that we already spent two years in court for. Should we not have thought about that before we actually even got into this whole eminent domain proceeding? Who dropped the ball? That's my big question. Who dropped the ball on this one? Because we have all of these amazing attorneys, you know, that, that surrounds Niagara Falls. And here, hot sin russ. And before we go take on this multi, multi, plenty of thousands of dollars that's pretty much squandered, two years later, five acres, we, we automatically own that. Like, no one thought to research that before actually hopping into an eminent domain case. So what, what, where do we go from there? Then two, this is another half of this because we talk about parkland alienation laws. Now, I know you guys heard me say that probably about two or three times up here. I feel like we're either going to do one of two things. We're either going to go back in time and right some wrongs because the last time I spoke about parkland alienation laws was when we were getting ready to vote on putting a dog shelter in our Hyde Park. I said, because that's doing what, violating what? Park alienation laws. But then now I sit here and I look at this resolution right here and this agenda item, and we're going to take back land that we say is due to us because it should have been a park, right? It was a 10th Street playground. But, and so they didn't utilize it. NFR didn't utilize it for what it was supposed to be. It's supposed to be a park. So, yeah, but we can go into, and we can actually take that because, you know, it's not, it's violating, and it's right here. We're talking about the parkland, alienation laws and things like that. We're either going to go back and right wrongs and then we can talk about this, far as I'm concerned, or we're going to be here as council. If we vote this through, we would be hypocrites. Because at that point, if we choose to push this through due to just that, due to that, it's supposed to be this, but they didn't make it that. And now it's, hey, this is something that we can take back. I think we would actually be practicing hypocrisy here as, as a body. And we would be literally cherry-picking in which park, who can violate and who can't violate park alienation laws. So I think, I think that's something that we should definitely kind of take under consideration before, you know, we push this through because that's what, if I can see it, I'm quite sure others who voted us in this position can see that as well, that we would be hypocrites to point a finger at NFR and say, you're violating park alienation laws with this five acres of land that we've owned after we fought for it in two years, you know, and spent your tax dollars on this eminent domain process when we just pretty much, you know, voted a $4.1 million dog shelter in our park? That violates what? The park alienation law. So that's my opposed, opposition for this.
Well, Mr. Miles, I think you're totally misinterpreting the law. What this whole thing is about isn't park alienation. It's the point that NFR failed to file the proper paperwork to take possession of this land. It isn't about the park alienation law. They had, they were, they had a requirement to file paperwork to take possession of the land. They didn't do so. Therefore, it still belongs to the city.
That was in 2004? Was that in 2004?
That's, that's when they were supposedly supposed to purchase the land, like we did with the park over there with the cannon. We had to apply to the state to take, to change that possession. So it isn't a matter of them, us turning it back into a park or them turning it into a park. It's about taking possession of it. They couldn't take possession. So you're misinterpreting, you're misinterpreting the intent of this altogether. It's not about turning it into a park.
No, 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 not turning it into a park. What I'm saying is, is because they, no, because it says parkland and it's talking about alienation. It's, it's right here in the actual.
It's the law.
Right, the law.
They failed to file the proper paperwork.
Okay, so question, I have one quick question for you. So this was back in 2004. So would that mean that our, our, our government, our local government and the attorneys and those who utilize in these type of cases are very incompetent? That it sits from 2004 all the way 20 years later, 2024? We just now finding out that they didn't do this?
It was up to them to do it. We just started the process of eminent domain, which we had to do in order to take the property back, which they sat on and did nothing to it.
That has nothing to do with it.
We didn't even look at it.
You know, I'm talking about since 2004, when they actually supposedly purchased the land and didn't file the paperwork or whatever that they were supposed to file. From 2004 to 2024, Chairman, did it take 20 years for our local government to find out that they didn't do just that? And we're going to go into a whole eminent domain process, even in that process? And it took 20 years after they actually purchased the land that they were supposed to purchase? Did, did it take 20 years for them to find out that they didn't do it correctly? And we already went into an eminent domain whole situation?
Why would they be concerned?
Because it's showing a lack of incompetency and it's so, and it's, it's, it's a lot behind us. It's a lot behind us.
Maybe that's how you see it, but that's not how I see it.
Okay, well, unfortunately, and, you know, I, I think people don't ask a lot of questions that may shine light because I guess I'm the sunshine counsel. Okay, I'm good. Wow. Wow. Wow.
Okay, Liz, please call the roll.
Councilmember Archie?
Yes.
Councilmember Banks?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
No.
Councilmember Zajac?
Yes.
Councilchairperson Perry?
Yes.
Four yeas, one non.
Four yeas, the ayes have it. Motion's carried. Action item number five, may I have a motion, please?
Yes, number five. I move the council vote to approve resolution relative to appointments and reappointments to the planning board, excuse me, to the planning board.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Any requests for information? Any opposition? This?
Councilmember Archie?
Yes.
Councilmember Banks?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajac?
Yes.
Councilchairperson Perry?
Yes.
Five yeas.
Five yeas, and motion carried. Action item number six, may I have a motion, please?
I move the council vote to approve resolution relative to reappointment to the Assessment Review Board.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Any information requests? Okay, any opposition? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Archie?
Yes.
Councilmember Banks?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajac?
Yes.
Councilchairperson Perry?
Yes.
Five yeas.
Five yeas have it. Motion carried. Action item number seven, may I have a motion, please?
I move the council vote to approve resolution relative to reappointment I move the council vote to approve resolution relative to reappointment to the traffic advisory commission.
May I have a second? Any information requests?
Mr. Chairman, so not, uh, information per se, but will we not have another post going up for vacancies on this board?
We have two other vacancies and I put, I asked to put it out and get that again for the 30th and 31st along with putting it on the website, which I noticed that this is the only one that's not mentioned on the website. And, um, I'm also gonna have it put out on the social media also come, this coming week. So, um, we will be putting it out there.
Thank you.
Any opposition? This?
Councilmember Archie?
Yes.
Councilmember Banks?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairperson Perry?
Yes.
Five yeas.
Five yeas, motion carried. Action item number eight, may I have a motion, please?
I move the council vote to approve resolution relative to the appointment to the zoning appeals board.
May I have a second? Information request? Any opposition? This, please call the roll.
Councilmember Archie?
Yes.
Councilmember Banks?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Um, just briefly with all these boards and the ones that we're not putting anyone on, um, I'm sure I might call his sentiments. Thank you to the individuals that serve on these boards, um, because they are voluntary. And we appreciate the work that they do, so yes.
Council Chairperson Perry?
Yes.
Five yeas.
Five yeas, the motion carried. Action item number nine, may I have a motion, please?
I move the council vote to approve resolution relative to the appointment of a marriage officer.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Any information request? Any opposition? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Archie?
Yes.
Councilmember Banks?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Council Chairperson Perry?
Yes.
Five yeas.
Five yeas, motion carried. Action item number 10, may I have a motion, please?
I move the council vote to approve resolution relative to amending Charter 738 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Niagara Falls, New York, entitled Clean Neighborhood Ordinances.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Information request?
Yeah, um, while I'm all for clean neighborhoods, right, uh, the way I read this, and maybe I just need clarification. Are we saying we are removing the warning system for residents? If they have, you know, debris, cluttered porch, whatever it is? And that as this reads, that the director of of Public Works could just by eyesight say, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna clean this up and send them a bill? Like, are we, is, that's the way I read this. Can you?
So to answer that question, I'll just recap, um, how, how the, how this ordinance works pre amended currently. And so you're, you're right, you talk about a warning and what you're referring to is that if, if there's, you use example of debris, if someone has a habitually cluttered front yard, whether it's debris, maybe rusty, rusty bicycles piled on the front lawn, uh, creating an attractive nuisance that some child may, you know, walk onto lawn and get cut by a bicycle. In that situation, um, all the, all the code enforcement director or the director of DPW can do is have the, have the property tagged with a 10-day notice. And so that's a tag that gets fixed to the front door. In addition to that, a letter goes to the occupant, who is possibly the owner, but maybe not, to the address, to the offending address. And then a letter also goes to, um, the owner, uh, if they're, if they're, uh, maybe a landlord and they're either a different address or outside of the city. So there is this way of giving advance notice and it gives people 10 days to make repairs. If this amendment is approved tonight, uh, it will only pertain to situations that, that pose an emergency relating to health, uh, public safety or the public right of way. And I'll give you an example. What is it that, what are, what is it that we hope to, to solve by this amendment? The example I'll give you, uh, is, it's kind of gross, but it's one that came up. If you have a next door neighbor who fills garbage bags with dirty diapers and throws them out their side door and it lands on the driveway next to your house and your foundation, the director of DPW can give a 10-day notice, but by then, the animals, oftentimes rats, will eat their way through that garbage and everything in it. And so by the time it comes, the 10 days run, even when the occupant or property owner hasn't cleaned it up, what's left for DPW to clean up is a, is a torn up plastic bag. And that can happen week after week, month after month at particular properties. So the solution is that situation poses a, a risk to public health. And therefore, in that particular scenario, uh, the director of DPW or the code enforcement officer doesn't have to give 10-day notice. That, that garbage bag and the diapers can be picked up as soon as there, there, a complaint call comes in. And because, uh, because of the inconvenience of having DPW do the cleanup that the tenants or the owner should be doing, either the owner or the tenant, owner or the tenant will pay for that cleanup. And we, and we hope that that will get the message through to landlords that they have to be tougher with their tenants and enforce good hygiene, good rules for hygiene, so that these types of incidents occur less frequently. But it is a problem and the amendment would address it.
Cool. So I, um, I think my, my, the bigger problem is most of the places that they're coming to clean up and they're gonna tag are gonna be in the inner city. And typically next to a city building, I'm just telling, I'm giving you mine, right? Like, right now, in front of the building I work in, there is a city receptacle. It's been filled for two weeks and I, you know, I thought I was telling somebody and they told me to tell the administrator and I did that. And it's still filled two weeks later with the garbage leaking out in front of Latinas on the ground. Who are we tagging for that, right? So like, in my mind, and it's in the, in the, in the right away, walkway, I don't, I only clean up so much. So I'm feeling like we're gonna be penalizing, um, some people while some may be of consistent offenders.
In that, in that situation, is it in a, uh, is it in a waste bin, a blue or green bin?
It's, it's hanging out of a waste, but it's ours. I know it's ours because Casellas is supposed to pick it up. But like, a- again, you know, we have the situation with the, with diapers, right? Like, at, at the end of the day, I feel like this is, this is giving a lot of, um,
Well, I'm not sure.
A lot of pen power to.
I'm not sure that the scenario you just described with something in a, in a plastic container would, would be subject to this emergency, but.
The reason that it is, is because it's leaking out from the, from the garbage receptacle onto the ground.
So the receptacle is cracked or broken in some way.
Yeah, it's open, but I've reported it many times and, and nothing's been, nothing's been done.
I, I think that this, this amendment, uh, requires, um, would, would require the director of DPW or the director of code enforcement to consult with the city administrator regarding whatever situation exists. And they would have to, they would have to talk that through and decide whether it qualifies. What you described may not qualify. Uh, here, here's another example that came up recently, uh, involving, uh, garbage, garbage bags, breaking open and spent hypodermic needles being on the ground. Well, that's, that's a pretty obvious one for, for safety and there should be no 10-day delay for that.
No.
That should be cleaned up. I'm not so sure about the leaking garbage can, but it would have to be taken at a case by case basis to determine whether that, that property owner deserves a 10-day notice or no 10-day notice. And that might be on, the garbage can might be on the line, I'm not sure.
Um, what about those dump, uh, those dump? There are people who actually go and they dump garbage in spaces that they don't occupy. Yeah, and then back alleys, um, and those spaces are considered, you know, you know, connected to these properties, that person who may not even have a clue that someone came behind their home and dumped whatever garbage or whatever, whether it's a bag of dirty diapers or not, um, into that one space. Like, how, how do, and, and is there a list of, because we're giving scenarios, but on our, on this item, it doesn't have like the exact of whatever it is that, because then at that point, I, I, the director of DPW can deem anything worth, you know, tagging and not really giving that 10-day notice. You know, is there something specific that, you know, that could be made public so the people can see, okay, well, listen, this is going to cost me immediate money, um, but I can see that, you know, this right here, I could get a 10-day notice.
So the scenario that you describe where, um, strangers to a property are dumping on it, that scenario I'm sure does happen and, um, it's going to be an issue for the people who get the 10-day notice and the people who don't. So in a sense, it's, it's immaterial to the current amendment. Because the property owner who, whether they get a 10-day notice to clean up the mess that they didn't make or whether they get a notice that says we had to clean up the mess because it was a public, immediate public health hazard or, you know, a danger to human health, uh, in either scenario, they're gonna complain and say it wasn't me, someone else dumped. And so that, those kind of defenses get, uh, get investigated and scrutinized on, on their merits case by case. And that will continue to happen. The second part of your question, um, I know you have a second part, let me think about it.
Oh, no, I, I can make it really clear because I know we had like specifics. I know you had said like the thing of diapers and stuff, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. And so really, um, uh, it comes down to common sense. And what we have to be, what, what our code enforcement officer and our director of DPW have to be aware of and will be is that not only do they have to run it past the city administrator for approval before they use this mechanism, but then they also have to be, um, in a right space so that if a property owner comes back and sues the city to say, um, you illegally entered my property and illegally charged me for a cleanup, that shouldn't have occurred, uh, we need to know that our file is well documented. So that if we go to court, when and if we go to court, we're able to present photographic evidence, we're able to document the hazard, the risk to public safety, public health, whether that's, uh, the bag broken open with baby diapers all over or some other, you know, hazard to human health. The recourse is that it will be argued in court and decided in court. And I trust that we will be prepared for that day when it comes. It will, I'm sure. And I, I know that there are disputes, um, currently under the current system. When, uh, the out of town landlord, um, gets a letter and their property is posted and they come back and say, I don't know anything about it. My tenant, my tenant said they cleaned it all up. Well, luckily we have photographs of, you know, when DPW clean team goes onto a property and, and photographing, uh, the pile of garbage or whatever it may be on the front lawn or wherever else. And that's the documentation we, we need and keep so that we can say we're following our ordinance and we're correctly charging. So those arguments will continue to happen. We do well defending ourselves against those type of arguments because we document.
And Mr. DeBois, just very briefly, um, kind of going off what my two colleagues had said. If this change did seem to not amend it or as Councilmember Archie said, you know, it's affecting one area worse or whatever the word may be than another, obviously it could come back to us to change it or revise it, right?
And any ordinance is capable of being amended. So if, if this, if this, uh, let me just give you a hypothetical. Suppose this goes to court and gets challenged and a judge says, well, I don't, you know, I don't like this language and so I'm not, I'm a rule for the, the property owner, you have to re, you know, you have to refund them the money you collected. We'll get some information from that type of case and we can come back and say, well, this judge decided that, that the language wasn't quite right, he or she would like to see this phrase. We could always come back to the council and say, can we amend this to correct it? By the same token, if, uh, if, if the council hears from community members that there's a consistent problem with the wording, then we can address it at that time as well.
Thank you.
And the fees go against their, uh, go against, uh, sets taxes if they all pay those to their.
That, that is correct. So, and, and that, that won't change, that part of, of the system will not change if this amendment is passed because, um, clean team will do the work, document it and bill it and then, um, send the bill to the property owner. And the property owner has so many, so, so much time to pay it voluntarily. And then if they don't pay it after a certain time, uh, there is a process so that by the time the next property tax becomes due on the offending property, that charge can be just transferred onto the tax bill and collected that way.
Anyone else good? Any opposition?
I think for me, it, it, it becomes, and, and a phrase come to mind, uh, the broken window theory. Where, uh, if it doesn't get fixed, it only gets worse. There's a small portion of, not small, it's a decent portion of our city, um, that experienced that at its worst. So that's our fourth district, I will say, and a portion of our sixth district, um, experienced the broken window theory where the level of neglect, um, is beyond. And so what happens is certain portions of the city, especially when you don't have to deal with it, like if, if you don't have to ride down that street, you won't because it might tear your axle off. Or, you know, and, and, and it's not something that we fix, it's just something that we ignore and go around. So to me, I feel like something like this and this type of change in a portion of a city that already has been neglected, and I'm not talking about what fourth district used to look like back in 1960 or 1970. I'm talking about 2025 today, what this district has experienced and what it looks like and the neglect that it has, I feel like this right here and this change is going to have more of an effect in those areas, in the marginalized areas, in the areas that are, you know, this, where people are displaced. I feel like this is, is gonna affect them the most because that's the area that's neglected. No one's gonna go into Vaux and throw any garbage down. When you hear anything about anybody dumping, like I had mentioned before, um, no one's gonna go into Kiuga Island and throw a mattress in someone's backyard. But this stuff happens on a normal, in this one portion, very cookie cutter portion of our city called the fourth district. And I feel like that would be super unfair to put something else that's going to actually have a direct effect on people who are already trying to clean up their space, but it, it continual neglect in that space. And, and you won't know it unless you live there. It's easy to sit, it's easy to sit here, if you don't mind me, I'm not done yet, sir.
You're very wrong.
Now, hold, do you live there, sir? Yeah, and you're in the fourth district. I guess I'm speaking and I guess I haven't yielded my, my floor yet. Let me finish what I'm saying. Is, is that because of the simple fact is, is that it's very tough and I'm speaking from someone who actually lives in the fourth district. I get a lot of calls from the fourth district members because they, I'm there, I'm in the heart of it. I've seen, I've had to clean up spaces in my back, off of, off of my backyard in the alley where people come and dump. And I'm quite sure if the clean team came and seen some of the stuff that I had to clean and they got to it before I did, or let's say I went on vacation and let's say they rolled by and seen something that said, oh, it's a hazard, we're gonna clean it up. And then I come home from my vacation and I see something plastered on my door saying, hey, we cleaned this up out of your backyard. I would have to be the one that would handle that from what I'm looking at, the way this reads. I would be the one that's responsible for that dollar amount for their cleaning. And my thing is, is that some spaces don't have to deal with it as much as others. Let me just say it. I'm not saying that it's never a, 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 a instance that that ever happens. All I'm saying is, is that this will have a greater effect on homeowners or whether it's renters in these areas, and I'm talking about the fourth and a portion of the sixth district. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying that, you, you don't experience where you live and you may, you may do. But all I'm. but all I'm saying is, is that this portion of the city will experience it much more, they will experience the, the, you know, financial ramifications of this right here, more so than other portions of the city. And that's just a fact, that's, that's a historical fact.
Garbage actually comes from the garbage truck when they drive through here on Tuesdays. So, are we going to implement somebody driving behind the garbage truck?
Call the roll bus.
Councilmember Archie?
So, I guess it doesn't matter, fourth district, sixth district, or wherever. I'm, I'm feeling like too broad of a pen stroke for one person, because I can't see, I can't see you giving me authority to do something, and then I'm calling somebody to ask them, can I do it? That, that, that doesn't, that wouldn't happen. And, I, no, I vote no.
Councilmember Banks?
Yes, so Clean Neighborhoods is something we've heard about from many of our residents who've come up to this podium over the three-plus years I've been here, and this puts some guardrails around situations to allow for faster attention and cleanup, to situations that impact health and well-being, from the way I read this. And if we do nothing, nothing changes. If we do something, we may see some change. So, I do vote yes for it.
Councilmember Miles?
So, basically, all in a nutshell, we, we don't have any information as to what are the details. So, we're saying some may not qualify for, you know, some may qualify for a 10-day notice and some won't, but again, this level of transparency or the lack thereof shows that we don't know what qualifies for an immediate, you know, money grab, as I would like to call it, or what will be something that would say, hey, that's, this only warrants a, this warrants a warning before we actually do it. So, it feels like one person, and I can say that, again, I, 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 you know, agree with Councilman Archie, that, you know, one person can go and deem anything worthy of that cleanup fee without a warning, and to give that power without, you know, you know, th- there's no structure behind that, there's no structure, there's, there's no, even on our garbage toast, if we, you get a fresh one, I mean, you probably can't see it now, because it's all worn out, but it tells you what you can, in, in, in the recycling bin, what you can put in there and what you can't put in there, and if you put this in there, and so on and so forth, this is, could be the ramifications. Well, there is no what you can and what you can't do on here, and I don't feel like that this is something that we should just put forth, at least at some point, without having that drawn in to say, hey, this is what qualifies for this and this is what doesn't qualify for, so I vote no as well. No.
Councilmember Zeta?
Um, no. Is this agenda item perfect? Probably not, I mean, I don't know much in life that is, but I do think, as Councilmember Beck said, you know, whether it be phone calls, or in person, or emails, we have heard of residents with issues in their neighborhood, whether it be one property, two properties, or dumping, Councilmember Miles, as you said, so I think we do have to try to do something to get action done quicker on it. I can appreciate Councilmember Archie and Miles, you know, the hesitation you have on it, but I think that's where we come into play, where if residents reach out and, you know, think something's being done unfairly, then we have to follow up on it with Mr. DeBois or the administration. So, as it sits right now and as the vote is currently happening, my vote is yes.
Council Chairperson Perry?
I have, I've been involved in several, I would say, at least since I've been on here, at least seven incidents where neighbors have called and complained about neighbors having their, their, their areas needing cleanup right away. The majority of them have been around the casino area and around that area, and there's been a number of them in LaSalle, and only two have been in the north end, so, you know, it's, it's throughout the city, it's not just in one area, it's, it's throughout the city, so, don't, don't, you can't tell me that's all unproporci, unproportionate in one area, it's, it's throughout the city. And I have not yet had anyone say, you know, oh, you're moving too fast, everybody's complaining, you're not moving fast enough, and I, I have not seen it, anybody really been taken advantage of at any point, they've been given more than enough time to take care of issues. I'm going to vote yes, without a doubt, and maybe, maybe, maybe it's not perfect, but you know what, it's the best I've seen yet, so I'm going to vote yes.
Three yeas, two nays.
Three yeas, motion's carried. So, that concludes our legislative slate for today, and we go into the public speakers. Do we have a list of speakers?
Yes, sir. Our first public speaker is Janine Gallo. I'll put the timer on for you, I'm sorry, the computer is being the computer today. So, I'll put your timer on, you can go ahead and start.
Thank you. My name's Janine Gallo, and I'm here to speak, and I could speak about anything I want, because the president passed it, and I could say whatever I want now. I am floored. Every time I come here and I think, oh, it's going to be, you know, same old, same old, I'm shocked to listen to the crap that goes through here. It's almost embarrassing for you guys to sit up there with a straight face, and you already have your comments of why you're going to vote yes, because you have to have a reason to vote yes, so you have it pre-scheduled to say, oh, I like what everybody's saying, but I'm going to vote yes anyways. Just say yes, that we could get out here faster if you just say yes. You don't have to give your lame excuse, but let's talk about dogs. Okay, last time I was here, the lady had two very valuable dogs, and now we have a new rule in the city, probably a lawsuit somebody sooner or later will have, you have a new rule that you have to have things notarized to redeem your dogs. So, my question would be to our highly intelligent staff here, of if you have to have something notarized to receive your dog, did all the other people have to have things notarized to receive their dog back? And is that the new law in Niagara Falls? If you lose your dog, all your paperwork has to be notarized, because you can't do it to one person and not do it to everybody. So, that probably is officially, because it's all over the internet, the new law in Niagara Falls, you have to have everything notarized. I'm wondering if you're going to add cars, like if you sell your car, do you have to have it notarized, everything else? Also, with properties, I, I've bought a few properties in my lifetime, and if I'm selling a property and I take the check, and I cash the check, and I charge, and the people 20 years later paid taxes on the property for 20 years, and I say, well, you, you, you didn't cross your T, so I want the property back, that doesn't make sense to me. So, I, I wouldn't blame the person buying the property, I would have to blame the person selling the property, maybe didn't file something, but that's a whole, like, I can't even believe the mess that you guys continue to put yourselves in, and I continue to say, you just say yes, and you don't care what happens, what it is. Now, if the garbage wasn't picked up, it's the law, right, it's a, it's a thing, you have to pick up the people's garbage here in Niagara Falls, and you have all these contracts, and you do all that, and if, for, for some reason, the garbage company didn't pick up the garbage for, let's say, two months, we won't say 17 months, we'll say two months, would the city be in an uproar? Would the attorneys be flipping out at the people that they're paying to pick up the garbage, and would there be chaos? Yes, there would be chaos, but you have a contract to pick up dogs, live animals, and you guys don't care that your contract doesn't, and it's the law, you have to pick them up. You can't be open a few hours a day and on vacation and this and that, it's the law. Now, the poor lady that had the two dogs, and we all know what went on afterwards, but the night before, there was a stray dog that couldn't be picked up because they were full, but the six grand, $3,000 apiece dogs were in the facility supposedly in 20 minutes, 20 minutes, and then there, we, do they, do, do the garbage company have the, the, an attorney from Niagara Falls, do they represent them in any problems they have? So, if I was going to have a problem with the garbage company, do the garbage company get their own attorney to represent them, or do they have to get their own? I'm just wondering if you have a contract here, because I'd love to have a contract here, and I get a free attorney. I don't even need attorney, I have the mayor's attorney to represent me. Makes no sense to me, it makes no sense, it's, it, I mean, when people want their dogs, give them their dogs. You know, it, there's no cap on what she charges per day to even get your dog. You know how expensive it is to go to a vet? Now, it's $65 a day to get your dog, and the place is closed four out of the seven days? Boarding is cheaper, better off to say, no, just keep it, board it, because now I only have to pay $40 a day. You have a contract, you don't even have caps to help people in your own city get their animals back. Shame on you, shame on you. We get, there was a presentation here, you didn't even put it on the videotape, because you don't want the city to see that you have a contract that would be feasible and be able to handle.
Thank you, Janine.
Thank you, Liz.
Our next speaker is Crystal Duchess.
Okay, this is my first time up here, so I apologize, I'm a little nervous. I did want to reach a comment about the taxes real quick, because I have 10 years foreclosure experience, and it's really a slap in the face to all the people that have lost their houses because they couldn't afford their property taxes, and you're just waiving it for a company that's, millions of people have lost their houses just because of those taxes, and you just waived them like it was nothing, and it's really a slap in the face, but I wasn't even coming here to say that. What I wanted to say was, it was my understanding that you guys got into those seats up there because we voted you up there. Now, we know that there are three of you up for reelection this year, and we know a lot of you just vote yes, you don't question things. Why do you think you'll be up there next year? There are a ton of us, which you know why I'm here, I'm for the dogs. We've been coming here week after week, and there's more of us, we just can't all come here, we're not lucky enough to have Wednesday evenings off. My uncle is a retired fire battalion chief of this city of Niagara Falls, and if you don't think I'm not talking to him and communicating all this information, you're mistaken. So, what makes you guys think that you're going to be up there if you're not listening to us? So, if you're not going to listen to us for the dogs, if you're not going to do it because we ask you to, do it for your own self-interest that you want to be up here next year, because I don't see that happening unless you listen to us. That's it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Arlene Dos Jackson.
I, I do have a question, I, I hope y'all got your pens and papers. Can you please explain to me what's the difference in a 501(c) non-for-profit, community development organization than the couple that we have been explained here in the past council meetings? And do you receive the request for the property purchases, or does that go directly to somebody else and you never see it? I can verify that Niagara United Vision requested to pay for 29 properties for redevelopment. I don't think you got the memo. So, it is definitely something wrong with what's going on up here. So, now I go on to the agenda part that I want to really speak on, because there are some questions going on in the city, and I told you I would come back to you with the information once I received it from New York State Department of Environmental Conservation to include the summary report, which states, and I gave that summary report and all of the maps to Council Chair Perry, Perry, I'm sorry. The park area has been cleaned up to restricted residential standards. There is no remaining contamination on this portion of the site. As discussed, the remaining portions of the site have been remediated and do not present a health risk to the public. The site is currently being managed and inspected yearly to ensure the controls remain in place as part of the site management. A periodic review is submitted to the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation detailing the current site conditions, and you have all that information in your hand. With that said, Niagara United Vision would like to go forward with requesting the City of Niagara Falls, New York, turn the property over to Niagara United Vision Incorporated, a nonprofit organization, for the construction of a city community park to begin in the spring of this year. So, I kind of received calls from people throughout the city, and they had a question, couple of questions, they also wanted me to ask the council, and the, the main one is who is managing the city? So, what they are concerned about is that Niagara Falls has one of the best ice rinks in western New York, and a stadium in the center of the city capable of hosting soccer, baseball, concert events, right here, in the middle, where there's restaurants all the way down Hyde Park. Why has there been no planning to utilize what we already have and invest in the city's infrastructure? How or why do the roads continue to be neglected? So, I just want to remind you of a few things. Hmm, the water park, it was going to bring lots of money to the city of Niagara Falls, was, it's gone. Our wonderful, what is, the beautiful mall, it was going to bring lots of money to the city of Niagara Falls, was, it's, it's, it's just sitting there, either waiting to be redeveloped or tore down eventually, right now, it's so broken, it probably could tear it down. Our winter garden, that was one of the most beautiful monuments throughout western New York. So, again, we all ask, who is going to, who is currently managing the city of Niagara Falls? I, I support Mr. Miles in saying, 2004, nobody knew what happened, and here we are, 2025, again, because it's going to cost you money, it's going to cost taxpayers money to go after that, what was it, five acres of property? What, what are we doing? Can somebody please tell the people what are we doing?
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tanya Barone.
So, I'm deciding whether I want to start with the best part first, or save that for last, it's a toss-up. I think I'm going to leave that for the last, the best part. So, I want to know, do we have to refund the purchase of this land that we're taking back from NFR, and reimbursing them for all the taxes for the last 20 years that they paid to the city? Something that we need to know. Parkland Alienation, I know we spoke about that regarding our dog shelter in Hyde Park. I don't even think that the DPW building should have been in Hyde Park, it actually takes up public space that's meant for the residents. Same thing with the dog shelter. Now, we're creating a business for someone to come in and actually take a contract from us as well, seems like a conflict of interest, as I've said many times. The Goodyear Chemical Plume Cloud, what is going to be the city's role in helping to protect our residents? Where's our mayor? He hasn't been on television at all to speak about this. Has he done a press conference or anything? This is a cancer-causing, aging- This is a cancer-causing agent that is, they've named the cloud. This is serious business. Now, I know there's an actual in-person meeting next Thursday, doors open at 6:30 PM, I believe it's Mount Hope Baptist Church on Buffalo Avenue, I suggest all residents attend that. We need to know what we're being exposed to, and we need to stand up for ourselves because no one's gonna do it for us. Okay? Now, the executive order just came out from our president to cancel the Green New Deal. What happens to the open space that we just rezoned in Love Canal? I doubt that there'll be grants and incentives for someone to build a solar farm there. Now, what do we do with that land? Nothing. My opinion. All of these solar panels around here right now, do you think they're getting any sun? They're covered in snow. It's crap. Crap, crap, and more crap. It's doing nothing for us. Is it harmful to the environment? Probably, they don't know, they're just putting it up there. Let's keep building more of this junk that makes everyone sick. All right, best for last, Bobby Restino is the director of Norlick. I just looked up the 2023 tax return, he's listed as a director. If that isn't a conflict of interest and illegal, I don't know what is. And let me tell you, it's public information, go on GuideStar, look up the non-for-profit Norlick, it lists everyone, including Chris Vocho. Doesn't list compensation, I'll be honest, doesn't list compensation, but you have to wonder how the mayor of this city is allowed to put this in front of you guys to vote yes. I'm not a lawyer, although Chairman Perry, April 24th, suspended me and said I have a Google Law degree from Yahoo University, and I'll never forget that. But I tell, tell you what, took me 30 seconds while sitting in this seat, and I'm not sitting where you guys are, and I figured it out. Maybe I should run for city council. I just might take one of your seats. And I bet you I'll win, and I bet you I won't sit up there and treat residents the way you guys treat, some of you treat residents, laughing, making up mockery to the residents that come up here and voice their concerns, getting them taken out by police officers and made to sit down. Maybe you should have some lawyers do some work, 'cause guess what, you might see some lawsuits coming.
Our next speaker is Vincent Colley.
Let's get started. Issue number one, eminent domain case. I gotta say it too. Point A, 1A, how did we as a city not know that they didn't own it? Why didn't we, and if we did know, why didn't we know that if it is true? Point B, if we did know, why did we start eminent domain case for some untold amount? Point C on that, two weeks ago, there was a company that invested $20 billion into the U.S. data center market called DMAC. We're, that's a, that's a country inviting $20 billion, and we're stopping one and a half billion dollars from coming into our city. Make it make sense. If someone were to say, Vincent, NFR and UrbanCon, they submitted their idea after the mayor did, I'd turn on NFR in a heartbeat, but I have seen no such data. Point number two, the Pottersfield on Highland, Pottersfield Ministry on Highland Avenue, why has, why can't we as a city give that old firehouse building that's next door to that ministry? Why can't we do that? They've transformed that area, I've been to there, I've worked with them, they're helping so many kids, such a good ministry, what is stopping, why can't we give them that building? They deserve it, and they, they, they well have earned that building. Fourth district, amen. Number three, is, is one of those municipalities that we, that, that was, that the administration was talking to, was that Lewiston? Have we asked Lewiston to help us with the housing, the student housing? Have we asked them, have we approached them? NU is in their, is, is in their district, but yet we, we have to deal with the problem of the students. Number four, LED, like, here's a quote, "LED lights that will give us technology to understand road conditions." I know there are some people in this room that has military experience, I call that mission creep. I call that goalpost moving, 'cause it's just supposed to be LED lights, they're just supposed to make the city brighter, make it look safer. How are they now understanding road conditions? Sounds like a sleight of hand. Number five, Restore New York, Rod Davis, RJ Davis Properties, where do those stand? I was on a council for those, I voted to get those away, where does that stand? Did we take the properties, 10 of them? Did we get the money? Where's the money? Where's the properties? What, what's going on? What's the update? And then lastly, $558,000 for DRI project, over a half a million dollars for interior and exterior building improvements. Where is that money? Where does it stand? Thank you.
We have no more speakers.